Hi, everyone, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. This is Select Board Chair Mark Strange. I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Steve Morantz?
Here.
Richard Foster?
Here.
Mark Gold?
Here.
Select Board Chair Tom LaCusa is unavailable to attend tonight. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Paul Pesterzik?
Here.
Michael Barbieri?
Here.
Do we have any speakers, Lynn?
Not that I know of yet. We may have some resident comment.
This open meeting of Long Meadow, of the Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely. Consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID nineteen, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. The Long Meadow Select Board is convening by Zoom webinar as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. For resident comments, use, using the Zoom webinar format, members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please raise, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will unmute you and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Is that still applicable, Lynn?
Um, you can hit star nine if you're on the phone, or you can just raise your hand to, to identify that you want to speak.
Okay, thank you. Members of the public who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. I will introduce each, each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the lineup of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. The first item on tonight's agenda is an update on COVID nineteen. And it's my understanding the Chief Dearborn won't be joining us, so Lynn will be providing the update tonight.
Thank you. So for today's active cases, we are at twenty-three. Last week, we did hit a low of nine cases, but we still remain classified as yellow under the state's mapping and code system. We completed vaccine delivery to homebound residents last week. The vaccine was delivered by the fire department over three days. The coordination was done by our vaccine team and the staff at the Council on Aging. It was great teamwork all around to get that done in that short three-day span. We do not anticipate reopening our clinic anytime soon. The state has provided no indication that they intend to support small local clinics right now. And we're remaining vigilant for any increase in cases following the April vacation week that we're currently in. That's all I had for a COVID update tonight.
Does, does any member have any questions for Lynn? Okay, moving on to announcements. Lynn, do you want to read the announcements?
Sure. So the annual town meeting is coming up on May sixteenth. The registration deadline to be eligible to vote at the annual town meeting is Monday, April twenty-sixth. Any resident should call the town clerk's office at five six five four one zero three for scheduling an appointment to register. And additionally, the town clerk's office will be open tonight, I'm sorry, on the twenty-sixth until eight P M. So next Monday until eight P M. to register. And again, town meeting is on Sunday, May sixteenth at one o'clock outside at Long Meadow High School. A huge thank you to all the Earth Day cleanup volunteers. It was a tremendous success. In spite of the weather, they had two hundred and fifty people set out in various twenty-two sites around town. And there were several D P W workers there assisting as well. And they were able to cart most of the trash to the old D P W site, to the transfer station. It was just a huge amount of trash that was collected and a tremendous thank you to that group. And hopefully, this is something we can work to make an annual event. The National Prescription Drug Takeback Day, presented by the Close Community, will take place on Saturday, April twenty-fourth from ten to one at Long Meadow Police Department. The event addresses a crucial public safety and public health issue. The DEA's Takeback Day events provide an opportunity for Americans to prevent drug addiction and overdose deaths. And all of this information is posted on the town website. And just a reminder again that we have new dog waste stations installed at five parks right now. One at Laurel, one at Bliss, one at Turner Park. I'm sorry, two stations at Laurel, one Bliss, two, one at Turner and one at the trailhead of Ponzie Road and Bark Hall Road. And that's all I have for announcements tonight.
Thank you. Does anybody, does any select board member have any questions for Lynn on those announcements? Lynn, I just have, I have one question. So refresh my memory, is, is registering for town meeting, is this a COVID-related procedure that we've instituted?
To register to vote? No, but having to schedule an appointment is. Normally, you could walk right into it, but now you have to.
So, so if, if we're already registered to vote, do we also have to register for town meeting?
No.
Okay, okay, so it's, it's the same. Okay, thank you. Do we have any resident comments?
I'm not seeing anyone. And just a reminder, if you hit reactions at the bottom of your screen and just select raised hand, we can, we can recognize you to speak.
Any select board comments? Is that Steve?
Yes. I, I, I want to follow up on Lynn's comment about the cleanup that happened last weekend. I want to add to that shout out for both Andrea Chason and Lori Robinson, who were actually the two chairs of the committee that organized, they organized the whole kit and caboodle, and also the Long Meadow Environmental Transition Group, which is an independent group, they were also extremely important in organizing this effort, so. Specific shout out to those folks who really did a great job and although there's an enormous number, amount of trash, which is, which is good and disconcerting at the same time. And I, I echo Lynn's comment that hopefully this, you know, can be some sort of annual event organized by an organization to be named leader, I guess. Thank you.
Yeah, they really did a great job. And, you know, thanks to Andrea and to Lori for putting that together. Mark, did I see your hand up? Okay. Okay, any more select board comments? All right, moving on to the town manager's report.
Thank you. So the adult center, I'm pleased to say that furniture for the new building is starting to be delivered. Council on Aging Director Jim Layden and his team are working to clean out the space, the current Greenwood Center space of items that are past their useful life and consolidate items that won't be moving to the new center. Furniture and general office items will be offered up to other town departments and then either sold or donated to the swap shop if there's no other municipal use. A proposal to staff and open the new facility is being worked on. And I anticipate the center will open with some capacity for programming in June or July, assuming that construction is completed and staff has already moved into the space. The fire union, Chief Dearborn and I began meeting with Local nineteen oh three to negotiate the new contract. I expect to bring an agreement forward to the select board in June. M V P Grant, Tim Keen, the town engineer, and I have had numerous conversations with multiple firms and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission on our next M V P grant application. The M V P program is highly competitive and there's declining interest from M V P for communities to submit grant applications for stormwater assessments. The M V P has expressed that they're not favorable to funding those types of projects in these upcoming grant rounds. So with everything else that's happening right now, and this time of year being especially busy, I'm not confident that we're going to have time to pull together an application. We were turned down by one engineering firm who explained that it's not worth the time, effort, and expense to submit M V P for stormwater as their experience as of late is that M V P will not fund it. And M V P has made a strong emphasis on moving in a direction of supporting applications that re, reach environmental justice communities with strong social components built in. The Green Communities Grants, they were, this current round, they've broken it up into two rounds. This current spring round was due April ninth. I had intended to submit for this grant round, but did not have to pine, time to pull through a well-thought-out application. There's another grant application in the fall, and I'm, I'll be prepared to submit it at that time. Fire Chief John Dearborn was appointed to the state's hazardous mitigation, hazardous Materials Mitigation Emergency Response Advisory Board by Governor Baker. The role Chief Dearborn will serve is as the representative of the Fire Chiefs Association. It's a non-compensated position and requires attendance at quarterly meetings. The Hazardous Materials Mitigation Emergency Response Advisory Board oversees procedure and policy for the state. The board consists of the state fire marshal, two representatives from the Fire Chiefs Association, a representative of the Professional Firefighters Association of Massachusetts, and the presiding president of the Mass Association of Hazardous Material Technicians. Westcom Castle and, Castle Booze was, Castle Booze Associates was awarded the contract for Phase One feasibility study with a future potential award for Phase Two schematic design through closeout design for the buildout of Salter College. Currently, the timeline has the work done and Westcom moving into the new facility on, in around April of two thousand and twenty-three. Ware and Southwick have filed letters of intent to join, however, with space limitations in the current center. They cannot actually come onboard until Westcom moves to the new facility. The radio system work has been completed for Long Meadow and Chickapi, and work is almost complete for East Long Meadow and Munson, with additional pieces for those communities being funded through the next, the state's next nine-one-one development grant. The radio project was built for a shared channel between East Long Meadow and Long Meadow Police and East Long Meadow and Long Meadow Fire. The shared channels went live in the last three weeks, and so far, the transition has gone fairly well. And the Historic District Commission on Tuesday, April thirteenth, met and reviewed a revised application on a certificate of appropriateness for the Veterans Services Director and Veterans Council on the installation of American flags on the ornamental light poles along the green. The revision included a trial demonstration of the flag installation in front of First Library and the flag hardware being black to match the lamp post. And I'm pleased to report that the Historic District Commission did approve that certificate appropriateness and flags are, have been ordered along with all of the hardware, and they will be installed soon. And this involves an installation from Eli Road in the north to Bernie Road in the south. That's the end of my report. Thanks.
Great report. Thank you, Lynn. Does, any select board member have any questions for Lynn on the, on the town manager report? Mr. Gold?
Lynn, my concern is the, the Westcom shared communications. My understanding is that's different from what we were told, promised, sold when, when we entered into Westcom, that each community would still be separated and, you know, I'm concerned because that means that the radio that our police and fire use, I assume, is being shared, so we hear everything that's going on in East Long Meadow while they're speaking and talking. We can't do that. Is, is that correct? And is there anything that can be done? Is this a, is this a vestige of the fact that the, the Westcom is growing and there's just not enough channels or, you know, what, this is very, very different from what we were, in, in my understanding, sold originally.
In the two thousand and fifteen feasibility study that was done by, blanking on the name of the firm, it did call for shared channels. It was not so specific as to what exact communities would be sharing, but it did call for shared radio channels based on call volume and dispatchers. So it, it isn't a situation of not enough channels available. It's more about the efficiency and model of dispatch, regional dispatch centers.
And, and just the, the, I mean, I, I'd like to go back and find out what we were told because, again, it's, it's different from what I understand we were told would, would be the system. And I, I get that, that it's part of the design. I'm not sure as much we can do, but it, it does speak to the a potential reduction in the independence of our police and fire departments and our ability to operate separately from the other communities when there's a lot going on in both communities.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else, Steve or Rich? Okay, moving right along to old business. Approving minutes from the April fifth regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of, from the April fifth regular meeting?
I'll move with approving minutes of the April fifth regular meeting.
I, I do have a, a very nitpicky question about these minutes. On the motions to approve the old minutes, the, I assume the person who identified, who made this, who seconded the motion should be identified. There is no identification for those seconds. I don't think it's all important, but it's, the record would indicate that there should be a, an entity, one of us who seconded that motion. So it's all business. It's the old minutes, you know. Seconded, somebody seconded the motion, but there's no name that next to him.
Yeah, I do, I do have that written down in my notes for the motions, but it's potential that I did not include that, so I'll make sure that I do that.
Second the motion for the current minutes.
Thank you, Richard. Any discussion? All right, Mike, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Okay, on to, on to the citizen recognition award discussion. And I know we talked about this a little bit at our last meeting, but Lynn's having a busy night today. I'm going to toss this back over to Lynn for a discussion.
All right, thank you. So in, attached to your agenda is a memo. Just following up on the conversation we had at the April fifth meeting, I laid out three potential processes. But you'll see that they've been slightly tweaked from what I recommended the last time, just based on some of the discussion and some of my follow-up conversations and just thought about how nominations come in and who they typically are received by submitted from. So the first one for consideration is that the select board direct the town manager to form an advisory group consisting of the town manager and one representative from each of the following elected boards and committees. The select board, the school committee, the planning board, the housing authority. The town manager would receive the nominations and then the advisory group would convene and make a recommendation on the recipient. The select board chair would then be informed of the decision and award presented at town meeting. Second option, the select board direct the town manager to form a small advisory group consisting of the town manager, the prior year recipient of the Citizen of the Year Award, and the town moderator. And then a same process would follow with the group convening and then the select board chair being informed. And then the third process would follow identically to what you do for all boarding committee applications where you receive and review nominations in public session and follow a typical appointment process like you would do for all the other boards and committees. So before I move on in the memo, I, I don't know if you want to discuss these options or if you all have some other ideas instead.
Yeah, thank you for that. Do any select board members have any comments? Yeah, Mark?
I, I, you know, I, I like, I like option one better than option two, but if, you know, if I could throw something in there, this little curve, I'd put two from the select board, two from the school committee, and one from the planning board, and not necessarily anybody from the housing committee, although I understand that Housing Authority is an elected board. They haven't been that active, haven't met. I'm not sure that that's as, as, as critical as the planning board, the school committee, and the, the select board, so that would be my alternative, if you will, to that, to get five people there. And I think it also ought to be, you invite them to participate, but if they don't show up, whoever does show up gets to, gets the same.
Mr. Morantz?
I, my, my opinion is that option number two is the cleanest, the simplest, the easiest. You know, you have to work out people showing up or not showing up. It makes the most sense to me.
Richard, did you have any thoughts?
I think I would stay back on number one. Actually, with the recommendations that Mark placed on there, that's my favorite.
Yeah, so, so the, these advisory groups would be considering the nominations that, that came in, right? They would, they would not be coming up with or creating the nominations.
Correct. And if I could.
It assumes that suggestions to come in.
Well, and that's, that's why I limited in, in option one, why I didn't have more than one select board member on there, because I do think what is missing from all of this right now is a policy that kind of outlines the process. And if a nomination is received, then that person, if they were part of the committee and they had made the nomination, but they would not take, take part in voting. And so that's why I had limited it to one member from each of those bodies, because a large number of the nominations that are received are coming from either select board members or other boarding committee members. And that's probably just by nature of you being involved in the process and knowing that it's happening. And obviously, the policy doesn't exist yet, so, you know, this is just something that I was considering drafting to put forward for discussion at an upcoming meeting.
Yes, so, you know, I, I originally liked number two better, but now that I'm, I'm kind of thinking about it a little bit more, two is certainly kind of the, the easiest, kind of cleanest way to go. But it would be nice to get input from, from, you know, all of the members, at least one member of all the elected boards. So I, I, I think I favor number one as well. I'm wondering if we wanted to add one more person just to make it an odd number, if that matters. I'm not sure that matters. Just in case we get that, that rare split vote for the.
I'd just, the history has been that this hasn't been so either contentious or so rad that I nominated such and such person, stick with them, that, that I, I don't think that you're going to run into, oh, well, I nominated some, somebody, and that's the only way I'm going to vote. I think it's been very, very open to this, Lynn. So I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't give as much weight to your concern about select board members being on there who nominated somebody, because frankly, very often, the only reason they didn't nominate somebody else is because they didn't think of them. Not so much that they, that they really, really favored someone, somebody else. Just wanted to throw that in the comment.
Mark, to address your concern, you might want to put the town moderator in as.
That's a good thought, Steve.
And so I would also just add that time is slightly of the essence, because we have town meeting coming up. And I would, if either option one or two are going to be exercised, especially options one, I don't have a lot of time to gather this group together and review the nominations that have come in. So I think making a decision tonight is what we need, need to do.
Mark, I'm going to move that we direct the town manager to form an advisory group consisting of the town manager, one representative from the select board, the school committee, the planning board, the housing authority, and the, and the town moderator.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Yeah, I'll second, yeah, I'll second the motion. I think Steve was second. The only proviso I would say that, Mark, we should have it in there and understanding that if a select board member, in fact, is on that committee and nominates someone, then we should slip in another select board member in the, in the, in their place.
That, that's fine. I, I mean, I.
Okay, any other, any other discussion?
Just for a point clarification here, would that only apply to the select board if they nominate someone, or if someone from the school committee nominates someone, would they?
Good for one's good for all. I think if, you know, that's going to be the problem, because if somebody from the planning board nominates somebody or from, somebody from the housing authority, so that's part of the issue. That's why I don't think it should matter, but if, if it, if it matters for one, it should matter for all.
Yeah, I agree.
Lynn, that's your discretion, I think.
Yeah, and I, I see, I see what you're saying there, and I think some of this can get sorted out when we come up with a policy just, or, you know, a procedure on how it's going to go. Maybe it won't be in place for this year, but it will be for next year.
And, and to some degree, you know, if, if somebody nominates somebody, they're better able to advocate for them, or you're, you're somebody advocating the other way around. I mean, the, very often, the written nominations have been sparse, to say the least.
Thank you. Any more comments? Okey-dokey. Mr. Barbieri, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster? Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Okay, and then the other um, pieces to this memo, um, were uh. At the last meeting, there was discussion about the other award category that had been created last year. Uh, it's called the citizen commendation award. This was one that you added on the June fifteenth, twenty twenty select board meeting. Um, it is uh, a citizen commendation award for. Uh, outstanding service or accomplishment, and multiple commendation awards can be given. And then uh, my last bullet on this memo just discusses that uh, I will be bringing forward a draft policy. To just outline both of these awards and um. Uh, add them to the select board town manager policy book, so we have something to fall back on as what the procedures are for these.
Did, did we, um, did we decide whether or not the um, the citizen commendation award would, would necessarily be given out annually? We talked about that?
No, I don't think we did, Mark.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I could, I, you know, with all that's going on this year, with Lynn, all, all these things she's doing. You know, if we can defer this a year until we get a policy, maybe that's gonna be a lot helpful to differentiate between the. What we'll call our traditional citizen of the year award and a citizen commendation award. If you recall, the citizen commendation was gonna be for the, that one situation where somebody did something that. You know, called the fire department and saved somebody's house from burning, that kind of thing. And, and, you know, since that hasn't been defined yet, we could defer that, I think.
Yeah, I tend to agree. Uh, Steve or Rich, do you guys have any uh, comments on that?
Yeah, the only comment I had, I, I made it before several times. Uh, the citizen of the year, to me, it should be what Mark just explained. Somebody that does something out of the ordinary that particular year, period, citizen of the year. And we had often talked about the other one that should be similar to a lifetime achievement award, which is what we're using for citizen of the year award. Now, it's somebody that is dedicated many, many, many years of service to our community and we're recognizing them for their overall contribution. Cause I get a little confused about the citizen commendation award. And, you know, between the two, I, I'm not sure. That we have a way to keep them separate the way they're written. You know, it says outstanding service or accomplishments, period. I mean, that could be over multi-years or it could be one-time event, could be one year. That's where I've always been confused, that we didn't further define how we wanted those two to come in, come into play. But I, since I only have uh, three or four more meetings, I would imagine we can drag this out till I'm gone and it will no longer be a problem. I know I'm right, Mark.
Um, and Stephen, did you have any, did you have a comment?
Uh, I might, I have no problem deferring this to a later date.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, I agree. Uh, so, do we, we're gonna get a motion to, to defer, um, defer this, do we land or pause?
No, you don't.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any, anything else uh, on the awards?
Yeah, lame duck status is horrible.
Okay, what's next? Um, next up on the agenda is a, a review of our updated select board procedures. Um, so, so in talking with, with Lynn and Paul, uh, and Tom earlier this week or last week. Um, we couldn't remember whether or not we took a, a, a final vote. To accept the, uh, the procedures as a whole, I know we went through kinda section by section. Uh, and, and, in that way, accepted, you know, all the procedures. Um, but, you know, the, the question was whether or not we should go back and, and do um, kinda one, one more vote. Um, on, on accepting the full, uh, new, new procedures manual. Uh, but, but an additional question came up as to, you know, did we wanna put in an effective date? Did I capture that properly, Lynn?
Yes.
And, yeah, Mark.
Why would the effective date not be effectively when it's passed?
I, I, I think, I think that's probably the assumption, we just hadn't, we didn't really talk about it.
I mean, is it worth saying July first, twenty twenty-one for the new fiscal year? I mean, if we, if we voted on it, we oughta be willing to live by it for the balance of this year, right?
Yeah. Yes, Steve.
Well, one, I would, I would have the date that we voted on it, but I actually have one question. On one of the, on one of the um, policies or procedures. Uh, that I, I don't think this is what I voted on, and this is, it's number four I. It's uh, about taking votes, and I, I would really wanna, I wanna revisit this, cause I wanna make sure I know. Exactly what we're talking about, this is the vote of present versus abstain. Um, you know, you vote yes or no, or present. And it doesn't say. If there are five people there, two people vote present, two people vote yes, one person votes no. So you have, I don't, is that, if that's a yes vote, uh, because you have. You know, the quorum there, I, I just, I, the whole thing that's still the present vote, um, I find. I'm not sure that the wording that uh, we have in the document clarifies, um, you know. Um, n- members voting, you got a quorum, is it the members of the quorum voting, is it the members of the five folks? We have five folks there, but, you know, two don't, you know. A two to one is in the quorum of the five, I, you know, I, I still need, I thought, I don't think present should actually be a vote. I think yes, no, or abstain, um, because present is clearly defined as. It affects, it's the same as, as, as abstaining, but it can't be a de facto no or yes vote. Which was sort of taken out of it, but, but the way it reads doesn't, it's not clear to me.
So, I don't, um, what, specifically, what paragraph are you, are you looking at? Because it's, it looks like we.
Section four, it's, it's procedures of uh. Procedures for board meeting and it's uh, section I.
And then what part of section I?
Uh, select board membership, oh, yes, no, or present.
So, so I think all we need to do is, is delete or present. Because I, I, I thought we got rid of everything else that, that we talked about.
We, we did, it's, yeah, I think we got rid of present, that would be, that would, that would, that would work for me.
Yeah, yeah, I think that was just an oversight. Unless, and, a- anybody else have any, uh, contrary opinion on that?
It's, it's not a contrary opinion, we, we decided that we would take out the word present. And somehow it got left into that line, item two.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought happened.
But, but the critical factors, Steve, there is that, that. A vote of the select board shall be adopted, if it receives an affirmative vote by a majority of members present and voting. Which means that if, you know, if there's two people not there, something can pass two to one. Even if the two people who weren't there opposed.
Right, I, I get that.
But, but, but we had never formally stated that it wasn't a majority of elected members to select board. That's the difference here. One could have argued, although I don't think anybody ever did. That, you know, the select board voted by a majority of elected members, as opposed to those present and voting. That's all this does.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. Do you understand?
Yeah, well, if, in that sentence, like board shall either vote yes or no. I think abstention is a vote, except, but, you know, you have five people, you have, you have a quorum. But two people vote to abstain, and the motion passes two to one, or loses two to one. It, that's, that's good enough, abstentions is you're not there, it doesn't count for that particular vote. I think, so, if the word present is taken out of the, so vote yes, no, or present, if we take out present, that works for me.
So, so the only change would be taking out, or putting in yes, and, and or between the yes and the no. Taking out the or present, and then otherwise you're good with it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that into that.
So, um, can we, uh, can, can we do, can we um, make a motion? Um, to accept those changes and, 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 and with that, accept the full document as a whole? Kinda killing two birds with one stone? Mark, can you work your magic with that, with that motion?
Yeah, I, I, I'll move that we a- amend the, the draft, paragraph four. I, uh, and to remove, so that it shall, it reads. Select board members shall vote yes or no on each item considered for adoption. And that we approve the entire document with that change.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Mike, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I keep losing my agenda.
And is that an implementation date now? Is that what the consensus was, or starting with the new term?
We did it tonight, I think it should be as of tonight.
I agree. Um, okay, are we all set on that, Lynn?
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Okay, uh, moving right along to the water and sewer billing discussion and updates. Um, again, we spoke with, with Lynn and, um, and Paul. And, and Tom, uh, last week about um, some kind of, it's sort of administrative or operational. Um, snafus that they're, they're running into, um, when trying to implement the, um, the winter averaging. So, uh, with that, I will toss it over to um, either Lynn or Paul, who can, who can get into those details.
You wanna go later, or shall I?
You can if you want, go for it.
Okay, we did have a meeting with, uh, representatives from Munis, and we did, obviously. As Mark alluded to, run into a couple of problems with, um, one. Um, we, the Munis representatives weren't. Able to identify if our current UB billing version can even, even handle. Um, winter averaging. So, they were looking in, into that for us, to make sure that we. If we did need an upgrade, um, that we get on a schedule to be upgraded. Now, that schedule to be upgraded is probably about two months out. Um, just as an FYI, um, and then also we got into the, some, some of the nuts and bolts. Of the winter averaging as it was proposed. Um, in order to do winter averaging and take a five-month winter averaging, as was originally proposed. Um, the way that the system works is even though we are reading on a monthly basis. We are not billing on a monthly basis, and the system looks at billing data, not what was read. So it creates a problem right away, unless we go to monthly billing. With the motion for a five-month winter averaging type of, of scenario. Um. We did a little bit of brainstorming, uh, you know, one possibility there potentially. Could be, um, to go to a six-month winter averaging with quarterly billing, which is another feature that we had discussed. Uh, and, and the water and sewer commissioners discussed, that then we tie into the two quarters. Um, and set that timeframe, and we'd look at, as an example, potentially the period of, say, October fifteenth through. Uh, April fifteenth, those two quarters in, with, that are within that span. Would be the winter averaging months that then would be applicable to the, the, the summer billing. Um, so that is also, um, just thrown out there as, as, as a, as a modification. If we wanna go with quarterly billing and potentially a, a quicker process. Um, so there is, that's, like I said, there's a few obstacles, um, that we encountered. Um, their timeframe, like I said, minimally, is if we need an upgrade, is a couple of months out. Um, they gave us a long type of, um, migration process. Um, you know, potentially to get this in place of a few months. If we wanted to maintain a, 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 a five-month winter averaging or do something a little bit different. Where we're taking the average townwide billing, um, those would require. Um, unique, um. Programming from, from Munis, um, that would be unique to the town of Long Meadow. Obviously, at a cost to the town of Long Meadow. Um, so, we're, basically at this point in time, we're, we're definitely in a holding pattern. And I don't know if Lynn, if I missed anything from your notes. If you, if you wanna chime in if I did miss anything, but, um, that's kind of where we were with that meeting with the Munis representatives.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you missed anything, other than, um, I would just emphasize that it's not a quick process.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments, uh, Mr. Morantz?
Uh, so let me simply have this straight, if we went to six-month winter averaging, October fifteenth to April fifteenth. And we wanted to change, um, how we bill. If we did that, could we get this done, since apparently, you know, rates are set in, um, in early to mid-June? Is that doable if we went to six months winter averaging?
It, 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 it basically all depends on when they get, I was gonna say when they get back to us, but. If our current UB version is capable of doing the winter averaging is the biggest question. Which we do not have an answer for. If we're not capable of doing with our current version, they had said that we're probably two to three months out. Before they could make that change for the town of Long Meadow. So, we, I don't have a definite answer for you, Stephen, on that particular question. It's gonna be dependent on the capabilities of our current UB, what's known as UB classic version. Um, and, you know, we are trying to get, get an answer from them, but have been unsuccessful over the last week.
Well, with six months, a six-month winter averaging, make it more likely that they could, that this could be done as opposed to five-month winter averaging?
My understanding would be, because we wanna go with a quarterly billing and not a monthly billing. That the six-month winter averaging would be an, uh, an easier fit, which to make it happen at a lot earlier. Um, like I said, if we wanted to go with a five-month, it would require additional programming. Or a change to a monthly billing cycle.
Okay, so, so if we, to make this considerably happen in times at the rates before, uh, the new fiscal year. Saying six months winter averaging gives us a better shot at doing that. Correct?
Uh, yeah, absolutely, it would be the, it would be the quicker path if everything fell into place, yes.
And when will we know if everything, if we said, okay, go six-month winter averaging, when will we know if everything fell into place?
Uh, you know, a- as soon as Munis gives us that answer, we would have a better idea of which path that we could follow. But without that initial path of what our current system is capable of, we're at a standstill.
Okay, so, at, at the meeting we had last week with Munis, we did ask them for, um, other communities they've worked with on this. They directed us to the Munis forum, we've posed the question there, asking for other communities have done winter averaging. asking for other communities have done winter averaging using Munis utility billing. We have not received any responses. So, today I put a question out to the mass managers listserv, asking that same question. Um, as of, uh, like five minutes before this meeting started, one response was received saying that this person thought that Northridge maybe did it. So, I will be following up and seeing that, um, because you can gain a lot, you know, but finding out how other communities have done it. But as of right now, we just don't have any examples.
Yeah, Paul, I have a question. Did you, were you saying that the, I'm a little confused because when I looked at the training material on it, it looked like you were able to just reach up and punch into the blocks, whatever month you wanted to run your averages and it, it, it just automatically took place. I'm a little confused why they were saying the six-month winter averaging could be implemented. I could see that being implemented as a billing cycle. But it wouldn't seem like that's any different than a four-month cycle or a three-month cycle or a seven-month cycle on winter averaging. Am I missing something?
I'm, I'm trying to answer it, Rich, um, even though we, we have data on a monthly basis, because it's not billed, they work off a billing system. They work off billing numbers. So, that winter averaging would have to match up with some sort of billing cycle. And if you wanna go with a four-month winter averaging, we would basically need four-month billing cycles. Um, that's the best way that I can answer and I, I hope it, it makes sense to you.
Well, that's not what I read, though. That's why I'm a little confused. Because it, it's looked like you could set up any type of, uh, winter averaging period that you wanted, uh, through Munis because, uh, you know, it's used, it's used in many, many different countries. We're not the only place using it. Or are you saying that we do not have the winter averaging module period? I mean, I'm amazed they can't tell you. I mean, y- you went to the source. It would think that they just took the serial numbers on our software and tell you what, what we've got. I, I don't understand the hesitation on their part.
Um, we had the Munis account rep to the town of Long Meadow and a project manager on the UB team, utility billing team, and, um, those were the answers that we got unfortunately last week. The only thing that I can say about that information that was sent, and I, I didn't go through it with a fine-tooth comb, but, you know, it, it does portray a lot of options, but I don't know if it ever gets into the question of, um, or, or gives you the answer of the, the winter averaging has to match a billing cycle or not. Um, they seem to make it sound very simplistic because I assume all their assumptions have a monthly billing cycle. So, all the options available are easily done in that information that they sent us. Again, I did not go through it with a fine-tooth comb, but that's the only thing that I, I consume, can assume, um, is happening there, that they make it look so easy, um, on paper, but again, speaking with them last week, um, a lot of hurdles were put in front of us.
Yeah, well, I'm confused too because you're right. The, the, what you sent out looked like it was pretty straightforward. Uh, and they didn't talk, I didn't see anything that got that concerned about billing cycles. It was more or less the determination on what months you would take and set the average on for the rest of the year. It, it seemed like it was totally independent of billing cycle, unless it was, unless the instructions were, were just not thorough enough.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
I, 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 you know, I tend to agree with Richard. I think one of the things Rich, Rich suggested some time ago that, you know, was to try to run a, a parallel test Munis system to see what it actually does do. I mean, because like he did, I went through their system pretty carefully and it didn't say anything like this. Clearly, they're the Munis experts and we're not, but it's pretty disappointing after we spent a lot of effort putting together a system. Then I'll say, well, we're gonna throw it out and we're gonna go to whatever Munis forces us to do, even though I don't believe that that's best for the town of Long Meadow. You know, and, and it would be my opinion to not do just be, something just because Munis can do it and to see what would happen. I mean, one thing I would ask Paul is, and I would ask Munis is, so what happens if we run the billing internally every month? Just to run it, but we only send out the bills once a quarter? I mean, we're running the billing cycle once a month. That's what they want us to do. We're only gonna mail, you know, we're only gonna print them out mailing once a quarter, if, 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 if it's that simple.
But if you're only gonna mail them at that third month, all you're gonna do is capture the consumption for that third month.
Well, won't, won't it show the, the, the three months that haven't been put into Munis as, as being paid?
Well, it would, yeah, I guess it would show the three-month past due, but then it would have complications on when the interest begins to accrue and things to that nature and demand notices and things. It, it has other implications.
Clearly it does, but, I mean, you know, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I'm extraordinarily disappointed based on the amount of effort we put in and looking at how much six months doesn't work in the town of Long Meadow. Six-month averaging doesn't work well in the town of Long Meadow.
Well, Mark, I can't see it work in any place across country. That's two seasons. That's, you know, it's a season. You know, I mean, it's kinda ridiculous.
So, so, so where do we go from here?
Well, the, I mean, the first thing we need to do is, is s- see what our current system is capable of. Um, and if we need to get an upgrade, o- obviously it's gonna have some implications, but until we really know what our current version can do, um, it's, to me, it's kind of, um, you know, we, we can talk about alternatives, but we don't, we don't know if the alternatives are viable. So, until we can get that first question answered, I think we're in a holding pattern.
But, but is it, I assume the first question is, can we do five-month winter averaging and have quarterly billing? That's what we want to be able, that's what we voted to do. That's what we wanna have happen, right?
And again, the answer would be even with, if we're gonna do quarterly billing, it's going to take some custom programming to do a five-month winter averaging because the billing doesn't match up with the winter averaging. So, it's doable. It's just a matter of what price they're going to give us to do that custom programming.
The custom programming was two months out, at least.
So, if we did a four-months winter average or a six-months winter average, that would make it more compatible with what Munis can do?
If we win with the six-month and quarterly, it would be easier to implement, yes.
Okay, well, uh, Mark and Rich, I understand the five-month, but October fifteenth to April fifteenth, I, you know, there are not a whole lot of people wondering, uh, after, uh, you know, after October fifteenth and before April fifteenth. I, I like five months better than six months, but I think if these are the constraints of the system, I mean, I, I can live with that. I'm not happy with it, but I think it's not, you know, the number, it's not, Stephen, it's October first to April first. It's not October fifteenth to April fifteenth.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, whatever six-month cycle you wanna choose, y- you know, that's, that'll be up to you folks. I just threw that out as a, as an example. The fifteenth date.
I, I, I'm at a loss, Paul, only because, because the amount of work we did and all the things we looked at were based on what we thought we read in, in Munis that they could do. And for them to say now they can't do it, you know, is, is, uh, we're better off right where we are.
But we're not. So, um, any other questions or comments on this?
I, I would think, I think we wait and get, get the, the direct word back from Munis before we, before we even move any further. We gotta find out exactly what we do have. It sounds like right now we're not quite sure what we do have.
That is correct. Yeah, I, I, I agree. I agree with that. Okay, that's Mark.
The only, w- w- one of the things I started here was a discussion of what did we intend to do? And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, there's an email out there that was distributed, that was what I thought the motion was and I thought we agreed on, and at least that would give Paul something to go to Munis with and saying, this is what the board wants to do. So, I wanna just make sure everybody understands that that's our intent.
So, um, you know, if, if, if Paul thinks and Lynn thinks that would be helpful, um, you know, we, we can, we can look at that. My only concern is that we, we make a motion, another motion tonight and then, you know, we hear from Munis and we gotta make another motion after that. Not that we can't do that, but I just feel like it gets, it gets a little bit messy and, and, um, it's gonna be confusing for the public.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I wasn't looking to make another motion. I, I think this is the motion we made, passed. And, and the only problem was it was kind of a motion stated on the fly, you know, and we were making adjustments to it, but, you know, I mean, Rich, you, you can look at it and Steve, you can look at it and say, yes, we intended it to be five months, November through March, that it was gonna be the, you know, those five months were gonna be billed at their actual usage and the rest of the year got billed at the lower of the five-month winter average or the actual usage of those months. That's how it was intended to be. You know, and then the quarterly billing part.
Right, that, that's what we voted on. Five-months winter averaging and no zeros and quarterly billing. And that's what apparently is tough to squeeze into Munis's, um, whatever they do. But I agree, that's what we wanted. That's what we voted on and that's what we should try to implement.
So, should we table this item until we hear back from Munis? Is that where we are?
I, I, again, I, I think w- w- we, we need to hear back from Munis. We can certainly, and I believe this motion has already been relayed to them, um, but we can certainly emphasize the fact, um, to see in their opinion what it's going to take at their end, no matter which way we, which UB system we have, um, what it's going to take at their end in order, in the timetable, um, in order to get this implemented, um, as the board desires.
My, my only last comment is it's, it is October fifteenth to April fifteenth. That is six months, as far as I can tell. So, it's not October first to, um, again, October first to April first, but the fifteenth to the fifteenth, as I said, it's not perfect, but it's, if, if that's the only way we can fit this one in, at that point, I think we should, we should consider that. We wanna do what we voted to do, but, you know, I think we might need to be flexible on this.
I, Steve, my only comment about October first to April first is our fiscal year starts on J- July first, so we need to read meters on the first of the month, not on the fifteenth of the month, in my opinion. Otherwise, we're gonna have, uh, months that fall into two fiscal years, and I think that's more of a problem for, for Munis than anything else.
One thing, Mark, about a, um, a July first reading, I, I, I suppose, I, I guess it would, it would be fine. We, we would probably get the bills out in, by August, they would be due at the end of August. I, I, I didn't wanna align water and sewer bills with real estate tax bills, but that's the only thing that I just wanna stay away from, that's all. But, yeah, a, 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 a July first date would work fine, or, or a July fifteenth. I mean, either one worked fine. To stay away from real estate tax quarterly billing.
Any other comments on this? So, so, um, do we need a motion to table this item?
I don't think it's tabled. I, I think it's, you know, I don't think any action is needed. I think we, Lynn and I know what the board's preferences, um, and a potential option on the table that I think we would carry that flag to them and again, come back on May third with, uh, you know, the, the, the update on those, on the preferred method and, and an optional method and any other information we can gather for you.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, did we want to, uh, discuss, um, the, the, the water rate? Uh, or is, is that, is that going to just totally complicate everything? Should we wait, a- ask another way? Should we wait until we hear back from Munis before we tackle the water discussion?
I, I think I would.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make two comments if I could. The first one was that the only reason I sent something to, to the town manager to distribute was because there was a, a comment by m- multiple people on the select board saying, if we're gonna do something with the stores, we oughta do something with the water rate and tier it, and everybody said, oh, that'll never happen. So, the, you know, I wanted to say, it can't happen and something did happen. You know, whether it's the tier rate we're going to go with or not, that remains to be seen. But, but, you know, tiering the water bill is a whole lot easier than tiering the, the sewer bill because everybody's water use is linear, if you will. That when you say you're in the category from fifty units to seventy-five units, everybody in that category, if you say that's your average, that's gonna be your average and it works well, as opposed to sewers where people are, are all over the place. So, the water is a, a lot more straightforward. The other thing is, Rich Foster sent out a, a, or, or had a, 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 an alternative tier rate that was sent out later this afternoon and, and I just wanna make sure that we all understand what a tiered rate is because I think what I saw in Rich's is different. But my understanding of a tiered rate is that, you know, if you have, whether you have three or four or five tiers, whatever it is, everybody pays the same price for the first tier and everybody who's in the second tier pays the same price for the second tier and everybody pay. So, if it's fifty units at two bucks, the guy who's using five thousand units, his fifty units are two bucks. And if, and if the next fifty units is at two-twenty, everybody's next fifty, and that's di- that, that's how I ran mine. But Rich, I think, ran his that the fifty units, every, you build all fifty units at one price and then his next tier, everybody builds all their units at a different price. And that's a different way of running tiers, and I think we need to understand what a tier system is or have a consistent method. And that's all my, I would like to get some clarification. We don't have to discuss the tiers. We just have to understand. The reason I, I noticed it in Rich's is because when he, when you do his tiers my way, it's short on money. When you do it his way, it's big on money, but, you know, eighty, seventy-five percent of the people down are paying more money. In my way, eighty-eight percent of the people pay the same or less. So, I think that's half his tiers.
Yeah, your averages are off on mine, but, uh, up, up to that point, you're, you were talking correct.
Right, right.
In my opinion,
I think, I think it's a whole, it's a whole different discussion though, guys. Uh, I think we need to get the sewage out of the way before we even talk water because the water came up, uh, in consideration of the sewage because we were gonna be moving money around on the sewage. So, we thought that if we do with the tiered rate, it's possible we could compensate for some of the offsets that this is going to have on the lower-use customers.
Uh, I agree with that, Richard, but I, but I, since we haven't figured out the sewage rate yet, I think we, we definitely need to, push this discussion off until we got sewage settled first.
I, I agree. Just push, push it off till we got it settled, and that gives Mark and I more time to argue.
Looking forward to that.
TikTok.
Uh, so, okay, so I, I think, I think, um, you know, I think we're, we're all in agreement as to where we are and what the best way forward is. Um, if, if anybody, if nobody else has any, any questions or comments on that, um, I think we can, we can probably move forward. Uh, Lynn and Paul, you guys know where we are?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, next item up is the Hampton County Retirement Board update. I know that there was a, uh, there was a, a conference call today, um, so I'll flip it over to, uh, either Lynn or Paul. I know Mark was there too, um, for, for that update and, and, and kind of for a broader update.
Um, I can, I can take it or I don't know if Mark, you wanna take it. Um, this is on here tonight partly, um, because the select board at your, um, March fifteenth meeting possibly endorsed a letter that, um, you had discussion about requi- uh, encouraging, um, resignations and I think you gave until April fifteenth, if I remember correctly. Uh, and so this is on here tonight as just a way of update, um, for those of you that have been following. For those of you that have been following, um, there was a resignation from the chair with no date of the Hampton County Retirement Board, and there was a resignation from the treasurer, from the, and also from the advisory council, um, which is dated for March, I mean, sorry, I'm sorry, May third. Um, so today there was a regional group that met, regional communities that are part of the HCRRB. Um, just to talk about where we go from here. And I don't, I don't know that there was any necessary consent, consensus. Um, the next two meetings are April twenty-eighth and April twenty-ninth. I think that there's discussion about someone else, uh, from another community running for that treasurer seat. And, um, if that person is interested, then other communities would, uh, back that person, hopefully having a successful, uh, appointment to that advisory council role. I don't know, Mark, if I missed anything.
No, Lynn, I think you captured. I think from my perspective though, the, the concern I have is that this will change one of the three seats, one of the three positions on the advisory board. And although the chair has said that he would resign, there's no date, he's not resigned. It is not indicated a date where he will resign. And, and to me, that's problematic. Because what it says is it's business as usual at the, you know, Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. Uh, and, and although the, their treasurer will leave, she will be replaced through a vote of treasurers of the thirty-five participating organizations who have funds into the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. But from my pers- perspective, what we, I would like to see the Long Meadow Select Board do is, A, direct our treasurer and the treasurer of other organizations we deal with, which in our case, the only other one is West Tom, happens to be the same person right now. To, to vote for change in, in the, in the leadership of, in the treasurer's position. And also to move forward with a, supporting a letter to the governor saying nothing's changed. And we need, we need some dramatic change in that, in that board. We've got the same executive director, you know, the, there were things found in the most recent, if, if those of you who weren't following it, it was, it was Purek, who's the state agency, did an audit as of two thousand seventeen. They did put them on, on some kind of a, a schedule for review. The director of Purek says that he has a meeting with the, with the chair of the retirement board on a weekly basis. But yet there were expenses submitted and, uh, for even the latest month that, that Purek found objectionable. Or found reason to be concerned about. So it, it, it's almost as if it's business as usual with the, with the retirement board. I think the town of Long Meadow needs to do something drastic. I mean, to the point where we, you know, when I need to do this, because it's work we don't need to do, is direct our CFO to find out what it would take for the town of Long Meadow to withdraw from the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. And I think if, if we did that and, you know, fifteen or twenty other organizations did that, they'd finally get the message, because they haven't gotten the message yet, that we have no confidence in them.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, any other, uh, comments? Yes. I would, even though it's, um, probably a, a, a lot of time, I, I would agree with Mark Gold. That, um, I think the next step for the town of Long Meadow is to see what it would take to re, to withdraw from this organization and put our monies elsewhere. I think that, yeah, if your organization isn't gonna change, it's time to leave. And so, I, I, it might not be doable, it might not be feasible, but we need to investigate that. I, you know, if, if, if the organization isn't gonna change, we, we need to change. So I, I would, I would agree with Mark on that one. Richard, do you have any thoughts on that? So, yeah, I mean, I, uh, wa- waiting for Richard. I, um, I, I agree. I, I, you know, I, I don't know, obviously, you know, what that would entail, or, or whether, you know, how we would, where our monies go directly into the, uh, the state system. Um, I have to, I don't know, we don't know. Um, but I think we, because, because I, I am a little concerned with, um, the, the lack of, of urgency for the existing, uh, board members and the director to change. Um, and, uh, I don't think they're hearing, um, their, their constituents. Um, so I, I do, I, I, I do admire, I support that. Um, to be still possible. I, I don't know, again, like Steve said, I don't know how, how much work that would, that would create, but I do think it's worth a look.
Yeah, I, I got my mute button figured out again. I, I agree with, uh, everything that's been said. I think it's long overdue for us to explore our options. And we've mentioned this before, uh, that we just, there's been discomfort with this organization for several years.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, i- is this worth a motion, Mark, or is this, uh, something done on? You know, I, I mean, I don't want to start a ball rolling that we can't stop it, but I think you can get the message. And, and, you know, I remember years ago, we talked about this and, and Paul Festerzak said to us rightfully so. You know, the investment is, 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 is one of the battles. And the second battle is the administration, administering your retirees and, and their benefits. You know, the investments are now all with pure, so, or prim, so that, you know, whether we send it to Hampton County Retirement Board, they send it to prim, or we send it directly to prim, it seems to me that that's not so much an, an issue, especially if we put a two-tiered system in place, which is new employees versus existing employees, or anybody coming on new, or something like that. The bigger, has always been the administration of, you know, people coming in and saying, I've had a problem, or I moved, or all this kind of stuff, and administration is paying the neck, you know? But back when we originally said that, we had a HR department on behalf of person. You know, for the amount of money we're paying Hampton County Regional Retirement Board, we can almost afford to hire somebody. And I'm not even suggesting we need to do that. But that's kind of the question that, that comes to my mind when it says, go it, go it alone. You know, invest our own money with, with prim, you know, put in some kind of a system where we do our own administration of retirees in our HR department, and, and then just, you know, wash our hands of that, of that whole system. You know, the prim return becomes our return, as opposed to, the prim return is seven and a half percent. Then the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board says they have expenses that equal two or two and a half or three percent. And so the returns to the system's only four percent. That's been my people along. And so that, that, when I say, you know, Paul or Lynn, what would it take for us to, to move out? Those are the kinds of questions. Paul, maybe I didn't categorize or characterize your comments, your prior comments properly. But maybe you wanna, you or Lynn want to comment about that.
Paul, you're muted.
Muted, muted. And I muted myself. Um, I guess the first couple of comments are, one, uh, to create our own system, you know, added with the town of Long Meadow, it's, 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 you know, it's, it's not gonna take one person in the HR office. It's more than likely going to take a few, I would imagine, but that's to be determined. But I guess the first step is from a legal standpoint, um, I would suggest we ask council if we are able to, um, revoke the vote that was taken back. Well, I think it was in the nineteen sixties potentially. Um, can that vote be revoked in order to get out of the system? Um, but that would probably be the first step. Um, once we have the determination that we can revoke that vote, um, you know, then it's, okay, how do we build a, a, a retirement system? So, um, I understand the charge, and again, I guess I would look to council first, um, to see if we can, i- i- if we can even get out of the system before we go too far down the road. And that, that's fine. I think that's a good start.
Like I said, I want to get a, I want to get the ball, you know, my intent isn't to pull out. It's to get enough communities to do this that they get the message.
Well, then we want to publicize this request of town council. We want other communities to know that we're investigating this, and they should as well. Wouldn't you agree?
No.
Not only do we publicize it, but I think, you know, it, it's like playing cards here, Steve. We've got to be prepared to actually withdraw. You know, I mean, i- i- this can't be a pure kind of action here. We've got to say, this is where we're going unless somebody does something to, to, you know, take us out of our misery here and keep us in the system.
I, I got that, and I agree. Okay, any other comments? Lynn and Paul, you comfortable?
Again, I think we have, uh, a charge to take the first steps. And, um, once we get the first steps determined, it'll tell us what our options are.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on to new business, Arbor Day proclamation. Uh, is this, is this, uh, your, your bailiwick, Lynn?
Uh, not entirely, but I'm happy to explain it. Um, the request has been made by the tree committee for the town to adopt this Arbor Day proclamation. It is something we do annually. It's part of our Tree City USA status. Arbor Day is coming up. They handed out tree whips on the green this past weekend. They have another event on the twenty-ninth. Proclamation is in front of you for, um, hopeful endorsement.
Mark, I'll move that we adopt the Arbor Day proclamation.
Second.
Any discussion? Mike, call the roll, please.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
And, uh, it looks like last but not least, um, setting our fall, fall town meeting date.
Yes, so it's a little shocking to be giving you this right now, considering we haven't done the annual town meeting yet. But we do need to, um, set it and, uh, get some things in motion. Uh, the date that we're recommending is November second. We've confirmed that the high school is available. Uh, and this was the first choice date.
I move that we, uh, accept the date on November second, two thousand twenty-one as a tentative date for our next, uh, uh, special town meeting.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Special town meeting? Is it just a regular town meeting?
It's considered a special town meeting, because we have an annual town meeting and then a special fall town meeting.
Sometimes it's a special fall town meeting.
So that, that's how it's listed in the charter, Steve.
Okay.
Quack, quack.
Uh, Michael, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Very good. So I, I, I think, uh, we've come to the end of the agenda. Um, is that right? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
All right. Um, so, uh, thank you, everybody, for coming. Uh, we really appreciate, um, your participation and following us along. And, uh, our next meeting will be the evening of May third, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, so we will see you then. Have a great night.
We need a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Barbieri?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
All right, thanks, everyone. Have a great night.